I'll call this 2015 special town meeting to order. Please be seated. Actually, let's rise. Please rise for the pledge allegiance and join us if you wish. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, eternal, just as for all.
Thank you. Now you may be seated. Good evening, fellow citizens and voters of Southampton. I'm Robert Floyd, your town moderator. It's a pleasure to serve you and thank you for your support and respect. Return of the warrant. Pursuant to the within warrant, I have notified and warned the inhabitants of the town of Southampton by posting an attested copy of the town hall and five other places designated for the posting of such notices fourteen days before holding said meeting. Date of December 31, 2014, signed by Constable. We have exits in the front, we have exits in the back, and our bathrooms are somewhere down the halls. This is our third televised special town meeting, actually, our second televised special town meeting, and we had a first televised annual meeting. So this is our third televised meeting, and it's taped by a community access commercial free TV. It's scheduled to be rebroadcast tomorrow, Wednesday, at 6 o'clock, January 21st. Thank you, ECAT, Channel 191. You speak Channel 5. Our town meeting is a business meeting of Southampton. Our legislative session called pursuant to a warrant that lists the only topics on which our meeting may actually take action. My role as your town moderator is to facilitate, to provide an open process that our voters trust, and to administer rules and guidelines in an even-handed manner, not to assure any particular outcome. My responsibility tonight is to be fair and considerate as I possibly can. Your responsibility tonight is to be the legislative branch of town government for tonight's articles. Tonight, you exercise your freedom of speech. You all have one vote, one single choice, yes or no, for each article. Before you vote yes or no, you individually are free to question, to amend, and to table any motion that is to legislate, all in civilized way. No comments of a personal nature, no naming of names are to be made. Rude behavior, especially shouting, bullying, lecturing, and personal attacks will not be tolerated. Anyone unwilling to comply with these rules will be removed after the third warning. So let this be our first warning. When you are ready to contribute something new, please approach the microphone up front. First come, first heard. State your name and address clearly. All discussions must be relevant to the particular motion before us, the merits or lack thereof for the motion. Please face me, your town moderator, with your opinions, questions, and answers. This is meant to prevent lecturing, bullying, intimidation, and cross-examinations. I will only recognize speakers standing at the microphone unless it is a point of order, including these microphones also. I will only recognize a motion and move the question from somebody who is at a microphone and recognized in due order. Please respect that you cannot speak and then try to move the question. For those who are here for the first time, moving the question is a town meeting term for calling the vote. So when somebody calls the question, we vote. Two-thirds want to discontinue discussion and go on to vote, that's what we do. Simply because someone states something, it does not make it true. When a majority leads towards approving or denying, it does not make it right by itself. The plan tonight is for you to speak no more than five minutes at a time and no more than twice on any article except to correct an error. Thank you for your patience and respecting everyone tonight. These guidelines will assist us in a more efficient meeting. May I hear a motion for Article 1, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer the sum of $5,376 to supplement the winter expenses account. Said sum shall be taken from fiscal '14 free cash.
Motion made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to speak on this? It's Vicki Morrow, Town Accountant.
Vicki Morrow, Town Accountant, Pomeroy Meadow Road. According to Master and the Laws, Chapter 44, Section 31D, in order to deficit spend our winter roads account, we need to budget the dollar more. It must exceed the appropriation from the previous fiscal year, which when we budgeted for '15, we did not do that. This $5,376 will bring us up to that level if, in case we need to deficit spend for this year's snowstorms.
Any questions? Any more comments? Seeing none, we'll vote on the motion under Article 1. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. The motion under Article 1 passes unanimously. I'd like to hear a motion for Article 2.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer the sum of $13,534 to supplement the winter wages account. Said sum shall be taken from FY '14 free cash.
Motion made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Vicki?
Again, this would fall under Chapter 44, Section 31D, in that we did not appropriate enough money in order to deficit spend for FY '15, and this $13,534 will bring us up to that level for the winter road wages.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article 2 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. The motion under Article 2 passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article 3, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer the sum of $5,029 to supplement the insurance general account. Said sum shall be taken from fiscal year '14 free cash.
Motion made.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Vicki?
This particular general insurance account is in the deficit of $5,029 due to an increase in insurance rates for the FY '15 year that were, we didn't include in the budget when we did the budget process back in May.
Thank you. Any comments, questions? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article 3, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion under Article 3 passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article 4, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer the sum of $20,708 to supplement the unemployment compensation account. Said sum shall be taken from fiscal year '14 free cash.
Motion made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Vicki?
We had some unexpected unemployment compensations for this year, excuse me, that were unbeknownst to us when we were putting together the budget. We were in the process of fighting these claims, which we lost, and then there were a few layoffs, and these people were awarded workman's comp, and so this is going to cover the deficit that we have to date. Unemployment. Oh, sorry, unemployment. My mistake.
No worries. Thank you. Any questions? Any comments? Seeing none, all those in favor for the motion under Article 4, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed to the motion under Article 4, please signify by saying nay. Seeing none, nays, the motion under Article 4 passes unanimously. Article 5.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town to vote to transfer the sum of $12,000 to the elementary school account for the water heater purchase. Said sum shall be taken from the FY '14 free cash.
Motion made.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to address this?
We're currently under net school--
Just introduce yourself.
Oh, sorry, Liz Molten, Pleasant Street, Board of Selectmen. We're currently under net school spending by approximately $176,109. This transfer of the water heater will begin to close the gap to help us meet net school spending.
Any other comments, questions? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article 5, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion under Article 5 passes unanimously. Article 6, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer the sum of $30,000 to the public safety feasibility account to fund the purchase of six tenths of an acre of land, the Bray property, for the purpose of an adjacent area to install a septic system, either for the public safety complex or to replace the current septic system for the current fire station, which abuts the area currently owned by the town and occupied by the town hall, the Larabee Building, and the fire station. Said funds shall be taken from fiscal '14 free cash.
Motion made.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who will address this, please?
Mr. Moderator, Charlie Kinecki, Valley Road. I'm the chairman of the Public Safety Building Committee. Basically, this is ensuring that we can go forward with the public safety complex project and to ensure that if we have to replace the septic system at the current fire station, we have land that's capable of supporting it. We've done extensive soil work around the fire station on town-owned property and came up with no soils that were suitable to support this. So this is the most cost-effective advantage way of approaching and keeping that land viable for use.
Thank you. Any questions? Yes? Come forward. And if there are anybody else who has questions or comments, you can just form a line.
Good evening. Barry Sussman, Nine Golden Circle. And the first thing I'd like to say is, thank everybody for doing the hard work to get this project going. But I looked at the map, and I had the opportunity to speak to one of my buddies in the construction trade, and he says that the land is landlocked, and thus, as an individual parcel, it's kind of worthless. And so I'm trying to figure out why we're paying $30,000 for such a piece of property and how we came to come to the $30,000. I mean, if that's the fair market value, you know, I think that's perfect, but how was it evaluated as being worth $30,000?
Question, Mr. Kinecki.
First of all, the land is not landlocked. It's a continuous property that goes all the way up to High Street that Mr. Bray owns. What we've done is surveyed out that parcel, because that's the acreage or area we need for to support the septic system. The appraised value was done by an appraiser.
Thank you. Mrs. Sussman, does that answer your question? Okay?
Thank you.
Cheers.
Bob Cozum, College Highway. I have two questions. I don't see it in the writing here, but in the reading of the warrant, mention was made about replacing or using this property as a septic system for the current fire department. This is the first I'm hearing that the septic system there is not adequate. Is that correct?
That was placed in there today for a motion. The idea of an article is, it's pretty much set in stone, but motions have a little legroom. So rather than having this motion for the proposed safety complex, a word or phrase was put "or" to repair the existing fire station's septic system.
All right. The second question, assuming then that the septic system is adequate for the current fire station, second question pertains to whether or not this warrant is a premature expenditure of free cash, which is highly coveted these days. And I say that because there has been no presentation to town meeting as to acceptance of any sort of safety complex anywhere and/or acceptance of the expenditure of town monies for building a safety complex. So assuming that this passes tonight, if the intention is to execute this purchase now, it could end up being a superfluous, premature purchase.
I have the answer for that, but I'd let Mr. Kinecki answer that.
Well, let's first back up with the septic system. One of my roles is I am a licensed septic inspector. The septic system for the current fire station sits within 100-foot buffer zone of the wetlands. If we were to do an actual legal inspection, we would determine it in failure because of that. So the current fire station basically needs to have an upgrade in the septic system, but it would be cost-effective if we're pursuing the public safety complex to do that jointly. There has been town money spent on this public safety complex venture already, everything from survey work, the plans, to the feasibility study. So it's not an unknown to the town.
One point to his question that isn't answered yet, I believe, if I remember it, will the, this passes, will the purchase of the property proceed, be executed immediately?
If this passes and the next article passes, yes, then we will move for a closing. I would guess one in 30 days.
Okay.
We also have a buy and sell agreement with the owner.
Understand. Does that answer your question, Mrs. Cozum? Thank you.
Susan Sussman, Nine Golden Circle. Mr. Moderator, I also have a question about inserting this issue today from the current article as written about the current septic system for the firehouse as is. If we do not purchase this land, if this doesn't pass, are we in imminent failure of a septic system for the fire station? I mean, is there a less expensive way to repair the septic system for the fire station, or is it in imminent danger of failing tomorrow so that if this does not pass, we have to relocate the fire station because of a failed septic system?
That's a good question. I have an answer, but I'll go to Mr. Kinecki.
Eminent danger, no. Can we set up a pumping program as we use it? Yes, so we can manage this for some time. There's nothing that's a crisis at any point.
Thank you. The concept of that phrase that was added was an insertion rather than having a separate amendment maybe at a town meeting. So there, again, there's some wiggle room in adding, as long as it satisfies purchase of property, dollar amount, we can never go over $30,000 without warning the inhabitants. So there's some, there's some boundary, so.
That answer your question? Yeah. Mr. Gwinner?
Ed Gwinner, Golden Circle. I know that just about everyone here is in favor of a new safety complex because the fire department and the police department work under dire conditions. We all know that. I have a couple of questions about the elevation of trying to hook the present fire station--
That's beyond, no, say, that's beyond the scope of the article. We're under an umbrella of purchasing that property for a septic system. Down the road, there will be a proposed article for the safety complex, and that's where all of this can come in.
Well, then, I guess my question would be, do we have to buy the property ahead of time? Because I can't see buying a white elephant if that's all it is.
What we're trying to do is invest in our community and basically utilize an area that's basically, everyone's been encouraging us to proceed. If we don't buy this property with the buy and sell agreement we have, we run the risk of losing this property by the time we get to our design and proposals for town meeting on the public safety complex. White elephant? Right now, we have a building lot that can't support a septic system, but if we have land that can support a septic system and we never build a public safety complex, we still have other options that we utilize that land in the future.
Thank you. Answer your question, Mr. Gwinner?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, one more?
One more.
Okay, you're allowed.
If, I know I talked about elevations for the building, but if for some reason or other, we buy the land and we're going to go ahead with this project, and when they go to construct the building, if it needed any blasting, which I'm pretty sure, living in Southampton for 74 years, that it would need it over there, that would be goodbye to the old firehouse. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Mr. Cozum?
One last question. As I understand it, the buy and sell agreement carries through until July. Is that, is that correct? So if this passes tonight, what's the necessity to execute that buy and sell agreement before July, assuming that the complex committee will be able to present the town meeting for the annual town meeting, which is probably May? So even if this passes tonight, is it necessary that we execute this agreement before July 1st?
Thank you. Mr. Kinecki?
I wish I could give a straight answer on that one, but the problem is, is we have a buy and sell agreement that says that there's a good faith effort for the town to put this in front of town meeting for a vote. The article is in front of the town for the vote. The drop dead date is in July for us for not doing the purchase, and I don't have the contract in front of me to read it word for word as to what it says for what's a good faith effort, because if we vote to buy it and then we hold it to July, I don't know where it's going to go with the lawyers. I have no legal background in that. So I can't give you a straight answer.
Thank you. That satisfy you, Miss Cozum? Okay, appreciate that. Thank you. Any comments? Any more questions? Seeing none, we're going to vote. We're going to vote on the motion under Article 6 to vote to transfer the sum of $30,000 to public safety feasibility account to fund the purchase of six tenths acre of land of Bray property. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. The motion under Article 6 passes by majority. I have a motion for Article 7, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town to vote to transfer the sum of $4,000 to the public safety feasibility account to cover legal costs related to the purchase of the Bray property. Said funds should be taken from FY '14 free cash.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to address this?
It's my day at the podium, huh?
Yes.
Basically, we need the money to pay the lawyers to take and do the closings on the Bray property and clean up the deeds that were sort of a hash mail between everything.
Yeah, ice cream cone, right in there.
Okay, well, this is basically to close the legal deal with the Brays, to take and record the deed and everything else relative to that transaction.
Thank you. Any comments? Questions? Seeing none, we're going to vote under the motion under Article 7. All those in favor of the motion under Article 7, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion under Article 7 passes unanimously. May I have a motion for Article 8, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer the sum of $28 to Larabee Renovations. Said sum shall be taken from fiscal year '14 free cash.
Motion made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Vicki?
This $28 is just a housekeeping issue. It's been, I've been carrying it forward until I could research what it was from, and I can't, you know, the Department of Revenue doesn't allow us to have deficits on our books. It's from FY 11, I believe, or FY 12, when I first got here, so.
Any questions? Any comments? Thanks. Seeing none, we'll vote on the motion under Article 8. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying nay. The motion under Article 8 passes unanimously. May I have a motion for Article 9, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer the sum of $178,865 to the capital stabilization. Said funds shall be taken from fiscal year '14 free cash.
Motion made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded.
Back in early December, Heather and I and Donna and the select board came up with a free cash policy that we thought would be in the best interest of the town, and this is a proportion of that being put away to stabilization funds. And so every year when we get the free cash certified, we want to be able to put money in those capital operating stabilization funds to replenish monies if we happen to take them out during town meetings.
Thank you. Any other comments? Questions? Seeing none, we'll vote on the motion under Article 9. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion for Article 9 passes unanimously. May I have a motion for Article 10, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town to vote to transfer the sum of $153,312 to operating stabilization. Said sum shall be taken from FY '14 free cash.
Motion made and seconded, and although I was paying attention, I didn't let everybody know I was, that vote required a two-thirds vote, and had there been a non-unanimous vote, then I would have had the counters. So this, this article also requires a two-thirds vote.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to address this, please? Vicki? I knew you were there.
I'm here.
All right.
Again, you know, per the free cash policy that the select board selected back in early December, 30% of that, per the policy, was to go into operating stabilization to replenish that fund year after year if we happen to use it going forward.
Thank you. Our newest voting member is coming down the aisle. Future. I want, any more comments? Questions? Seeing none, we'll vote. Motion under Article 10, which requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article 10, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, it require, it meets our requirement of two-thirds vote and passes unanimously. Motion for Article 11, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer the sum of $51,104 to the OPEB account. Said sum shall be taken from fiscal '14 free cash.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to address this? Vicki? You can move right up here.
Once again, per the, which I think there's an attachment, if you, if you got the motions in the front, of the free cash policy, it was decided that 10% of this would go to this fund, other post-employee benefits, which is being required by the state, that we'd set some money aside for retirees' benefits in the future. Just, we need to make sure we have money in there for that liability going forward.
Thank you. Any comments? Questions? Seeing none, we'll vote on the motion under Article 11. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion under Article 11 passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article 12, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to-- Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer the sum of $75,000 to supplement the elementary school account. Said sum shall be taken from vocational tuition.
Motion made? Second? Motion made and seconded. Who would like to address this? Yes?
Dave McDougall. From what I understand, there were so much money set aside for the children that were going to be going to the vocational school. And what ended up happening is not as many kids went as we thought. So there's $75,000 left over in that account. And this goes back to net spending to take up the deficit of $176,000. And $176,001 or $9. And so that's why the money's being transferred to the elementary school.
Thank you. Anybody else like to address this?
Mike Beeler, 88 High. Could someone please explain what the meaning of the net school spending threshold and the implication of not hitting that number?
Heather Pajewicz, Town Administrator. So net school spending, we explained in one of the previous Board of Selectment meetings. We actually had a bunch of folks from Hampshire Regional came down to help us as well. Net school spending's an interesting concept for the town of Southampton. We have two pools that make up net school spending for us. One pool is Hampshire Regional School. That's over there. The second pool, when Chapter 70 was put together, they came up with the equation and they included charter schools, school choice, vocational schools, and our elementary school. So all these pieces are put into one for net school spending, and it's one little set. Smith Vocational School, at the beginning of the year, we get an estimate of how many students are going to attend. Over time, what happens is kids, just like with college, they make other plans, they change their mind, and the enrollment changes from what we originally anticipated. For instance, this year in FY15, we had appropriated $868,124 for Smith Vocational, but we actually ended up spending more around by the year end. In June, we'll be about $766,830, which is an approximate difference of around $101,384. Why is this important? Well, the way the state looks at it is, they say at the end of the year, you still have to spend whatever we've allocated you for your net school spending amount. And they don't really care if you have less kids that end up going to the vocational and not. When you have less kids, it's not that they all of a sudden take money from Pool A and put in the Hampshire Regional Pool. It stays separate. So what ends up happening is it just draws a deficit in our original net school spending gap over here. So where we originally had whatever percentage we were hitting for net school spending when everyone was going to Smith Vocational, now that these students aren't going, we end up having more of a gap. And with everything coming in at lower numbers, if we have any indirect spending costs that come in lower, it just brings our percentage of hitting net school spending down. Now, why is net school spending important? Well, the state says we are supposed to be aiming for 100% in net school spending, and that should be our goal, and that is our goal. Unfortunately, this year, due to all of our financial hardships, we did not make 100% net school spending. We were closer to, I think Liz quoted earlier, 96.8% is what, 98 point, no, I think it's... Okay. Once we transfer, it'll be 98.6. Right now, it's on my sheet here somewhere, it's around 96%, give or take, between 96 and 97. Why is that important? Well, once you get to 95, it becomes a problem. The state at 95% or anything under 95% will start assessing us a penalty that we'll have to pay next year, it'll be a fine. And in addition to that, any amount of money that we do not spend for our net school spending amount that they say we owe, they'll put on the top of our bill for next year. So it's really important, A, that we do not go anywhere near 95%, and B, that we put a good faith effort in to try to get as close to the 100% as possible. So by using the $75,000 from Smith Vocational, because again, if you remember, it's $101,000 difference. And, you know, we want to leave money in cases of change, in cases student needs a special education program and the costs go up. So at this moment, we're saying safely between the school and the town that we think $75,000 will be a safe number. We're asking to transfer that amount to put a good faith effort in to get closer to meeting the net school spending gap that we currently have. The other thing to keep in mind with the funds is it's not coming from our general overall budget. All we're doing is we're doing a line item transfer here. We're moving money from Smith Vocational to the elementary school. If we hadn't done this and if we didn't do this, two things would happen. Number one, we'd be getting closer to that 95%. And number two, the money next year would roll over into covering any deficits we had at the end of the year, or if there was just surplus, it would eventually become free cash. But if we got close to that 95%, ended up with a penalty, and ended up with having to pay the difference overall, it would cost us more than the $75,000.
Thank you. Mr. Beeler, that answer your question? And maybe one day, I want to be here, but our town administrator can ask a question and you can give an answer. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, we're going to vote. We're going to vote the motion on Article 12. All those in favor of the motion on Article 12, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Hearing none, the motion on Article 12 passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article 13, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer the sum of $3,500 to supplement the building inspection expenses account. Said sum shall be taken from building inspector salary.
Motion made? Second? Motion made and seconded. Who would like to address this? Vicki?
Excuse me, that's different from what's on our papers.
We're under Article 13?
Yep.
I don't know yet what the discrepancy is, but the motions can be different than what you have if they were changed at the last day or week. The articles are in stone. What difference do we have?
Article 13 says move the town vote to transfer the sum of $3,500.
I, he did say 3,000. It could have sounded like 2,500. Did it to you? I had heard that, too. One ear heard 2,500, the closer you heard 3,500. But he did say 3,500.
Thank you.
But good call. Thank you. But I did play that in my head, too. Thank you.
I lost my train of thought here.
Okay, we're on Article 13.
Yeah, yeah. $3,500 we're going to transfer from the building inspector's salary to the building inspector expenses account. I don't know if you remember that we previously took some of this money from the reserve account because the building inspector wasn't hired right away. And so we had to pay the alternate and we have to pay the commissioner because the building inspector is currently obtaining his license to become a commissioner. And we need to take those out of the expenses because we have to pay that person as a vendor. And we're replacing the money back into the inspector expenses account in order to pay for other expenses going down the road. It's just a transfer from one budget line item to the other.
Thank you. Any questions? Any comments? Seeing none, we'll vote, motion under Article 13. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, the motion under Article 13 passes unanimously. Motion for Article 14, please?
Mr. Moderator, move the town vote to transfer the sum of $3,664 to supplement the reserve account. Said sum shall be taken from the building inspector's salary.
Motion made?
Second.
Thank you. Motion made and seconded. Vicki?
This original money, we took out of the reserve account to pay for the individuals out of the expense account for the commissioner that's overseeing our current building inspector and paying for the alternate. And we need to put this back into the reserve account so the finance committee has money at the end of the year in case other people come up with unexpected expenditures that need this money to pay for.
Thank you. Any questions? Any comments? Seeing none, we'll vote, motion under Article 14. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion on Article 14 passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article 15, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town to vote to transfer the sum of $3,038 to pay prior year's bills from FY14 to Gary Swanson. Said sum shall be taken from the Water Enterprise retained earnings.
Motion made? Second? Thank you. Motion made and seconded. This motion under this article requires a nine-tenths vote. Who would like to address this?
Back in October, we originally had this invoice on our special town meeting, but because the retained earnings, which is the free cash for the enterprise funds, had not been certified yet, we were unable to take this out of those funds. And because this is a prior year bill, we need to take up a town meeting vote.
Thank you. Anybody else like to comment? Question? Seeing none, we'll vote. We need nine tenths. All those in favor of the motion under Article 15, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, this satisfies the requirement of nine tenths as it passes unanimously. That includes our business for the night. We'll entertain a motion now to dissolve our special town meeting. Motion? All right, good. Second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Our meeting is dissolved. Thank you, Ms. Janine Domena, our electric town clerk, our counters, Orfor Bucier, ECAT, Paul Fish. And thank you all for coming this evening. Your value participation is much appreciated.